Appreciate that. Oh, let's try that again. Welcome everyone to the Thursday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty four Winchester Planning Board Meeting. Um, we are being recorded on um Wind Cam as well as Zoom. If you do not wish to appear on the recording, please turn your microphone and your video off. Uh, we have a full planning board with us this evening, so I'll do a roll call vote. Sally Dale.
Present.
Uh, Nick Rosettos.
Present.
Carrie Leighton.
Present.
Eaching Scott.
Present.
And I'm Dejus, I'm present as well. We also have with us Taylor Herman, our town planner. Um, we have uh Wind Cam who is recording us. Thank you very much, Wind Cam. Um, so we have a fairly straightforward agenda for this evening. We are going to enter into a public hearing. Um, on the planning boards uh proposed articles for the town warrant. Um, we have one article. Well, we have two, one of them is a report to town meeting. And the other article is the main one we'll discuss this evening, which is the article to bring the town into compliance with the uh state MBTA three A multifamily zoning law. Um, typically at this point, we have some sort of a presentation, but um, because we have been busy um, tuning this thing up until the last minute, we don't really have a presentation for you. So I think what might be um useful is if Taylor, if you could pop up the language we've got, which should be pretty much in its final form. And um, I'll just discuss some of the sections of the bylaw. And the background, and then we can move into um a public hearing, which is um essentially where we sit back and we listen to um what uh the residents of the town have to say. So um, we do actually have to enter into a public hearing. So if someone would please make a motion to enter into the public hearing for the purpose of um reviewing the planning board's motion or article to town meeting.
ISO move.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, so let's do a quick roll call vote. Nick.
Aye.
Eaching.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
And Carrie.
Aye.
Okay, and uh I will write that down because uh our recording secretary is not with us this evening, so we entered into public hearing at seven eighteen, a unanimous vote. Okay. So um Taylor, if you could pop up the um document.
Yep, I'm also gonna send it to all of you right now. You have it. Um, we also do have to review the map. You want to do that first since it's just us showing it.
Well, when you say review, you mean the planning board review it or for the for the?
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
You have to vote on it.
Yes, but I think we're.
Yes, you do that later.
We will do that later. Yeah, um, right now we're in our planning unless the board wants to delay the hearing in order to see it, but I would suggest that we um.
I mean, if if we've already agreed on everything, it would seem. So the voting is a, I mean, we would vote after the hearing?
I think we would vote after the hearing. It may be that something comes up during the hearing.
Right, right. We may want to change uh based on our, based on the comments.
So why don't we um first of all, go through, see if I can find my Zoom window again, excuse me. Um, so for those who don't know, the MBTA three, uh what we're calling MBTA three A is I believe known as the MBTA multifamily zoning act. It is a law that was passed a couple of years ago, which requires towns to provide districts where multifamily housing is by right. And the definition of the state of multifamily is three or more units per lot. Um, the state put forward certain requirements on communities based upon um how they are served by the MBTA. Uh Winchester falls within um the commuter. Ah shoot, is it just commuter or commuter rail?
Commuter rail.
Thank you, commuter rail had blanked. We fall within the commuter rail, um which is just up from bus um and below rapid transit. So um we have been working on this for a couple of years now. Um, we have defined some overlay districts and we've put together um zoning, which we believe is compliant with the state's requirements. And uh so I think I'll just um go through this. And we will discuss, let's just scroll through this um slowly. So the first thing that we would be doing is we would be defining a set of new overlay districts. Um, an overlay district is one where if you can essentially, it says if you have a use which is permitted in an overlay district, you follow the rules in that overlay district. Otherwise, if you want to do something which is not in that overlay district, a use which is not permitted, then you follow the underlying zoning. So that's important to realize that, recognize that we have designed our overlay districts which provide one use, which is multifamily by right. Any other uses would um still um require adherence to the underlying zoning. Okay, so um if you scroll up a bit. What essentially we're doing is we're creating a new overlay district called the MBTA overlay district, which allows multifamily housing as of right. And what this means is that as of right means that as long as you meet the dimensional requirements and the use requirement, then you are allowed to permit to the standard building permit processing without having to go through a special permit. Um, the state does allow us to um require site plan review. And uh we have incorporated that. So if we scroll up to the next page, please. So these are the um the reasons that this act was passed by the state legislature. Um, it's important to note this was passed to increase the amount of market rate homes available. It is not designed to be an affordable housing um generator. It's designed to essentially increase the number of units at market rate, which would hopefully, if the market works, decrease the cost of um the housing units. Uh, it is supposed, it is also designed to be where the units be built within um a certain distance of an MBTA station, in which in our case, that's the Winchester Center Station, and it requires a certain number of units in a certain area to be located with a half mile of that station in order to promote a housing which is transit oriented. And as we um scroll down further, um, this indicates that our town Winchester is, we're required to have a land every approximately forty eight acres, half of which has to be within.
Green's not up to date.
Oh, eight eleven two. Right in the middle.
Okay.
Um, we require us to have approximately forty eight acres, of which a half of which must be within a half mile radius of the MBTA station. Um, half of the units have to be in that area as well. And um we need to have a a density of fifteen units per acre across the entire overlay district. Uh, one of the things that's important to note is that this is a zoning measure which sets dimensions and sizes for buildings to meet a um aim for a particular number of units. It does not require that the units be built. And because our OLA districts are already in areas where we have most, in most part, previously zoned higher densities. This will not actually create an additional large number of units over what we already have zoned for. So um I, the exact number of units required is in our compliance model. I think it's around twelve hundred or so. Um, we find that we, that's essentially the same number of units which could have been built in these areas already. So um we will not be seeing an additional twelve hundred units being built. What we would see is the number of units, which is essentially I'm consistent with our existing zoning. The big difference, of course, here is that the new units, the multifamily units will be built, can be built by right without having to go through a special permit process. So if you scroll down a bit further, please. So we can see the map. Um, this map is something which um we have worked with our, uh, we have an excellent group of of town residents who have worked with us to help us um refine the map and refine a number of um aspects of this plan. And so this is the current set of overlay, the current overlay district, which has been split into four separate sub-districts. Um, mod one, M O D one is essentially the north core of the town center, uh including a few buildings in the museum district. Mod two is, or I should call it M O D two, uh is a couple of parcels of North Wedge Pond, which there's a Winchester Housing Authority and a condominium complex there currently. M O D three is um essentially um G B D two, rather, which is up north Main Street. And the M O D four is Parkview. That's the entire Parkview complex. The state allows us to use existing areas. Um, so it is not looking at the actual buildings on those lots. It's looking at how they are zoned for density and for dimensions to achieve a certain number of units. So we are able to use, for instance, Parkview to um as one of our districts, it helps us with area. If you scroll down further, please. So we see here is the use table. This indicates that these four different types of dwelling units are, will be allowed by right in these areas. Uh, these four units are what is defined in our zoning bylaw as being housing which has more than three units per lot. Um, we call them different things than the state does, but these are, these four different types of um developments are what in our zoning bylaw refers to something with more than three units per lot. Uh, if you scroll down, please. So um one of the things we need to do is we need to create um a table of dimensions. Um, these, these dimensions are tightly coupled to what's called the compliance model. Uh, the compliance model is essentially a um a big calculator which takes into account the areas of our districts, the areas of the lots, um setbacks and building heights and um number of stories and calculates the number of units based upon um a um size of a, of a unit. And we turn out and we come out with a number which allows us to comply with the models. So um what we have here are M O D one and M O T two, those are, M O D one is the essentially the, the northern part of the town center. This is where the Starbucks is. This is the part that is north of um the Rotary at the town center. Um, these numbers we see for the F A R, the height, the stories, the setbacks, those are all reflective of the existing underlying zoning. M O D two is the uh, is that really M O D two or is that M O D three? No, that's M O D two. I'm sorry. M O D two is the North Wedge Pond area. Um, these are two parcels where there is actually a special permit, which is for those two um developments there, the underlying zoning um does not have this. The original zoning has a lower density, but special permits allowed for a higher density. And so the numbers you see here in M O D two reflect the existing density of units on that area. Um, M O D three is uh general business district two. And these again are the numbers consistent with the underlying zoning. And for M O D four, which is Parkview, um, we have uh Taylor spent some time calculating, and so it's remarkable that they have a floor area ratio of one, but that seems to be the case. So these again are the numbers that are um consistent with the existing buildings on M O D four. So um, we have not tweaked the underlying zoning. And Taylor, please correct me if I'm wrong on that. This has gone through a number of iterations. Um, the next.
That is correct.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, if we now scroll to the next page, please. Uh, we, we do look at the um the off-street parking requirements and the number of parking um slots does actually impact the number of units that you can build. Um, often buildings uh parking takes away from the ability to put in units. Uh, the existing, oh, we uh we have to edit that table because it does not have the M O Ds on there. So where you see town center, that's really M O D one, and that's the existing uh requirement of point seven five per unit. Uh, for G B two, which is really M O D three. Um, point seven five per unit is um higher or lower rather than the existing um parking ratio, but it is consistent with our desire to extend the development pattern of the center business district up through the G B D. Um, we will be pursuing that rezoning in the fall. We had planned to do them simultaneously, but we don't have the resources to do both. So the point seven five per unit is consistent with the design pattern. Um, and the North Wedge Pond is the existing. And Parkview, um North Wedge Pond, I'm sorry, that's M O D two. And where it says Parkview, that's M O D four. That actually, again, Taylor did the calculations and it really only has one per unit. Um, so those are, um, so that's the parking. Um, we scroll down here and we are allowed to put in by the state general development standards. What's important is the state does wants us to be very objective in what we put down so that it is clear to developers what they have to do. It also means that um there are, um, the state does not want um no, let's just keep it that way so that it's clear for developers what they have to do. Um, the state is interested in seeing the development goes forward. It wants to give towns the ability to um set some development standards, but it doesn't want to get the, the process bogged down. And so what we see here are um the development standards. We do have a site plan review authority, uh, which will be the planning board. Um, all projects which come in under the M O D will be reviewed under site plan review by the planning board. Um, the planning board will um, as it does with its um S P G A um role or special permit authority in the C B D, we will reach out and collaborate with other um boards and committees in town to ensure that um there's a thorough site plan review. Um, if you scroll down a little bit more. So these are some of the designs guidelines that um we have in here. These are specific statements. Um, the state has allowed us to create um separate design regulations, which would go along with these, and as long as they are um in agreement with what the bylaw says, they will, we, so what this means is that um should this pass a time meeting, the next step will be for the planning board to draw up a series of design guidelines. I'm sorry, design regulations, um which would be used to help uh the planning board um review the um permits that come, or the applications that come forward. So what we see here are general development guidelines. Um, so we have um, we refer when, when possible to other sections of this, our own town bylaw so that we don't, so we have some uniformity. Um, so if you scroll up a bit, Taylor. These are all the various guidelines. Um, you know, mechanical screening, um dumpsters, stormwater management, produce boilerplate stuff. Um, we also have a situation of buildings, whether the, in this in particular. Um, this is just situation relative to the lot. Um, we have a definition of building height. Um, this definition follows that of the center business district. Um, the, we do in, in our bombing, so many bylaws have two separate definitions. We chose to use one from the center business district because the massing of the buildings should be similar. And the design should be similar. If we scroll up, please. Um, we have further design guidelines for um if you, the, the three A um law allows you to have multiple buildings on a lot. Um, this describes um how their layout is and the relationship to each other. These are all, again, general development standards. If we continue on to the bottom, we see that we do have a um clause which discusses um historically significant structures. Um, it talks about how we um would like to maximize the um preservation of the structures and their um external details as much as possible. Um, we are, we are going as far as we can within the law in terms of what we can do to um introduce protections. Um, if you continue down to the next one, please. Um, this is a map indicating which uh historical structures are in the M O D. There are um a couple of them down in the, the northern core of the town center. And then we have a few scattered up along the um North Main Street, and you would probably recognize some of them as the small houses near Parkview. Um, and some of the houses are smaller lots, which um up towards the north. You scroll down, please. Um, we have an affordability requirement. The state allows us to um require that up to ten percent of the units be affordable. Um, we have um chosen to apply as much as possible the affordability requirements from our center business district and G B D and G B D three. Um, the state has a different way of defining the percentage. They, they prefer to round down rather than to round up. Um, the state says we can have up to ten percent at eighty percent affordable area median income, which is um consistent with going, these units would be eligible to go onto the state's um the subsidized housing inventory. Um, so the ten percent does not actually improve upon our existing S H I level. Um, it just keeps us without, it, it prevents us from going any deeper in the red. Um, we also have decided to add an existing five percent requirement um for projects which are greater than twenty five units. And this, this requirement would be similar to what's in our existing inclusionary housing, which is that um they are in the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent area median income. This is um often termed workforce housing. Uh, the state does require that if we have anything above ten percent, that we get an economic feasibility analysis, which shows that it would not be a burden on development. Um, the state provided us with a consultant um to do so, and the consultant has come back and said that the town is able to essentially, uh, we could choose to do um all of our units at eighty percent area median income, which is a larger burden on the developer than one hundred and twenty percent. So we are within the bounds of our um the studies which indicates that this extra five percent is um economically feasible for developers. And so um we should be fine with this. Um, we, the continuing down to development stands of affordable housing, these are all standards that are essentially put out by the state. And if the um, in order to um build them, they will meet, these will essentially make sure they meet the state's requirements for um being on the subsidized housing inventory, which is also um in the seven sixty C M R fifty six you see at the top of the screen and three A and three B. Those are the state regs which regulate the um subsidized housing inventory and the requirements for homes that are on there. If we scroll up again, please. Um, so here um is, the state does allow us to uh implement a site plan review. A site plan review looks at um things such as um how the structure is situated on the lot, how it interacts with its, its um environment. Um, certainly some design um standards can be um looked at. Uh, what, what a site plan review does not do is it does not allow you to um deny a project from moving forward. Um, you can put reasonable conditions on a project. So um, and what we have found in the past is that most developers are they're eager to work with the boards to come up with um conditions that um meet our needs. Um, so this is again, uh, a site plan review is, we cannot reject a project. We can however, put um reasonable conditions. And so what we see here is that all projects in the M O D are, are required to undergo site plan review. Um, this section here states um that the planning board will work with the other boards in town. Um, that historical structure, historically significant structures will undercode, will undergo review and especially that they are still subject to chapter fourteen of the Winchester Code of Bylaws, often known as the um the demolition delay bylaw. Um, and then we go down and there's a, if you scroll down, please, there's just a list of what the um applications required. Um, we then finally, or at the end of this page, there's a timeline. Um, this is similar to timelines we have in our, in our existing bylaw, which is that um we have a deadline to um reach a um decision on a project that comes before us. And um, and this is to ensure that um there's no delay in development and everything proceeds efficiently. We want good development to proceed efficiently. Um, and so this gives us plenty of time to review the projects that come before us. Um, the next, the next um thing on the next page is a clause which essentially says that if the state finds that some portion of this zoning bylaw is not compliant with their requirements on our MBTA three A, that it does not invalidate the rest of the bylaw. Um, so for instance, if they'd say that our, for some reason, they say our site plan review guidelines are non-compliant. Um, we can go back and change those, but it still means everything else is compliant. Um, we are allowed to adopt regulations, and so that's what eight eleven ten does is it allows us to adopt regulations which are consistent with the bylaw and therefore also they must be consistent with um the state law which drives this. And then um we have discovered that there are a number of definitions which are um required for this bylaw in part because they derive from state definitions. Um, and we've put them in here because it's possible they may conflict with some of the definitions we already have in our zoning bylaw. So we have put them at the bottom of this, at the end of this bylaw and said that they are um used only within this section so that there is no possibility of a um conflict. So that is uh as brief a presentation as I could come up with. And so now I think at this point, we're going to turn this over to the public. And um we already had, um, Taylor, I'm gonna let you be the emcee.
Uh, thank you. Uh, yeah, so if anyone has, would like to speak, just uh raise your hand and I will call on and you may speak. Or unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Anne Sarah. Um, I've got a couple of questions and comments. Um, the first is just, I just would like to suggest that when you put on mod one, mod two, mod three, the labels, that you also use the descriptor in your presentation and background materials, because it's really helpful to have both. Um, second is um so when you say we, you have, dear, I would like to just slightly push back when you say that we're not modifying our underlying um zoning, because you are from, for mod two, you're basing the zoning, your, your dimensional requirements and bar, et cetera, um based on uh special permits, not on zoning. So in that area, so you had said that we're not changing much with respect to what's already there.
Yes, I understand.
But it's right. So it's, it's true when you say we're not, what we're, what, so our dimensional requirements reflect what's already been built would be exactly.
I thank you, thank you.
Right, not, not that we're not changing underlying zoning. Um, and then um uh, I wonder, I, I did see something that said, put, put the parking in the footprint of the building, which I uh, I wonder, I I did see something that said, put the, put the parking in the footprint of the building, which I love, because I'm a huge proponent of robotic parking, which keeps not being used anywhere. But um I wonder if we can also uh kind of prod people to use solar, geothermal, um green roofs. Is there a way to 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 sneak that in somehow? And um should I just keep going?
Uh, we're gonna make a note of those. I think the answer, so I don't, we won't have answers to your questions.
Yeah, yeah.
That's actually a question for legal, believe it or not, so.
Okay.
We could, so I'll, I'll, you know. So green, green building, okay.
Yeah, yeah, more green building stuff. Um, and then um I was, I learned something thankfully, that I did not know that the ten percent was a cap on the um affordable ability requirement. So just wanted to check that that's true, that's a cap from the state. We can't higher than ten?
You cannot go higher than ten unless you have uh economic feasibility analysis to show that you will not create a um a burden on the developer. Um, the background for that is the state was, is trying to create market rate housing.
Yeah.
And one of the things I believe they were worried about is that they didn't want communities to hike up the level of affordability to the point that no one could actually develop.
No, which is exactly what I wanted to do. So um, or I mean, at least I would go up to twenty. I would. Uh, I also am a little bit confused because it is very true that unlike many communities of for whom I think this uh MBTA law was targeted, we actually, our zoning actually does have multifamily down downtown. Um, and because of that, I'm trying to think of myself as a developer, and I wonder, sir, surely one of you have gone through this exercise. You're coming in as a developer, you can do a friendly forty B, you can do a a non-friendly forty B. Uh, you can use the underlying zoning, or you can use this. Is there a reason to use this? Is there, is there some, I mean, one of the reasons is because with either forty B, whether it be friendly or not, the amount of money that you take home is limited. Here, the amount of money you take home is not limited, so that's great. But why would I use this rather than the underlying zoning? I still have that option. Right? And and again, again, our underlying zoning already allows multifamily housing, and that's why it's tricky.
So in many areas, the multifamily housing is allowed, but only by special permit.
I got it.
So this would allow you to come in, and to be honest, um adding commercial space to a building can actually be a negative in terms of the revenue from that building. So many people would prefer to have a residential-only building.
I got it. I got it. So that, this, that's the big plus here is it adds residential only downtown. That's the big plus for this.
Well, it it, the state requires that it be multifamily by right, so um for developers who are not interested in doing commercial, this expands the area in town. They would be able to do that.
Okay, the last, okay, so the only, I have two more questions, I'm gonna just spit them out, and then you can answer them however you want. Uh, what regulations, you have the ability to put in regulations to implement this uh this zoning law, by law, what regulations do you foresee? And then finally, how are you going to mandate, or how are you going to enforce that the affordability portion actually gets built and stays affordable? Because I'm, I'm worried that it's sort of, people, people say, well, that'll be affordable, and then and then somehow it never gets built, or it never, you actually never, you actually somehow you have apartments and somehow they aren't affordable.
So the, the um affordability will be deed restricted?
Well, that's, doesn't work for apartment.
Uh, it would also be for, you know, the certain, for apartments that could float through the building, but a certain number will have to be um restrict, have an income restriction on there. That's actually um things that the state can come in and break and enforce if they wish. Um, but the point is that in order to get through the permitting process, they are required to do so. And we already have a couple of we have at least one project that was built downtown, which required a deed restricted unit, and it was built. Um, and so this is, this is something which we are familiar with, and it is something which um we can sue the pants off of them if they don't do it, and I think the town is very interested in ensuring at the very least that we get our SHI units.
Right.
Um, so things that are included in the regulations. Um, these are things that provide a little flexibility, for instance. Um, when we we looked at a few of these, um how you handle the pedestrian park, pedestrians entryways, um what types of plantings. Um, these are, these are sort of um design and um guidelines which allow us some flexibility to handle um, you know, different layouts on lots where, for instance, um, we might need, if in order to make a design work, we might have to change where a building entrance goes or pedestrian entrance. Um, you know, whether or not, how how you, what pavement types are used. Um, you know, where uh I mean, I'm looking at a lot of what we had, and so those are the type of regulations that we'd be looking at. And I don't know if I answered all your questions. So then um is there someone else who would like to speak? I know that John Sirbir of the Housing Partnership Board um had mentioned that he wanted to um speak. Um, he did send the board a um a memo, but I thought, I I I thought he would be here this evening. So.
And we also have a memo from Susan Verdicchio, and I thought she would be here this evening.
Okay, um Taylor, do you wanna, do you wanna pull those up while we wait and see if they show up in person?
I think there's a League of Women Voters um debate going on simultaneously.
Ah, okay.
There is, and it's for three different seats, right? School Committee, um Housing Authority, and and you know the third?
Is there a select board?
No, it's not a select board. I don't know the third.
Well, we're grateful for those of you who are here, and we encourage you to speak up, ask questions, ask for clarification. Um, ask for rationale, um because we've put a lot of learning into getting this far. Anne's back.
Anne, is your hand back up? Or did you not put it down?
I think she put it back up again.
She might be answering who the third seat is.
We can't hear you.
There we go. I, you weren't allowing me to unmute. Um can I just check? Is it the um it, would it be more favorable to the town to have a developer use this overlay district rather than the underlying this, uh, the underlying zoning or the um or the either, you know, either friendly or non-friendly forty B process? And also, why not just change the underlying zoning? Why use an overlay?
Um, so the, let's, let's go, let's take your last question first. The underlying zoning, actually, we're looking at multiple districts that we had to use in order to create the overlay. To change the underlying zoning would kind of be a nightmare. It's a lot easier to simply state for this particular use, here's what you do. And you, you, you've been around long enough, you know what a mess our zoning bylaws are, and the when you touch something, you're never quite sure what's going to happen, so um it was felt that this would be the cleanest way of implementing this. Um, and certainly we do have plans for redoing the underlying zoning on North Main Street. Um, so this allows us to proceed with those and still get our compliance with the state. In terms of how, what sort of project was more beneficial to the town, um, I think that really depends on what the developer is interested in building, you know, if you know, there is a benefit to the town to have small affordable units which are close to downtown, which have elevators in them for people who have mobility issues. So those are certainly some of the ones we would like to see developed. It would allow, you know, so there's a demographic that perhaps a multifamily by right would address. Um, you know, going through the um a forty B um is, is a you know, you do have to have a significant amount of money to go forward and do that, and this might be, you know, not all developers would have that sort. I mean, we look at the two forty Bs in town, those are all done by a very large company. So I think uh we do have a a smaller forty B, a a a L I, a LIP, a local initiative project on Cross Street, which is is done by a local developer, it's much smaller. Um, so you know, if you have the land and you want to do it through a forty B, um, you know, there it all depends on what kind of development you're coming forward with, so there's no good question, answer to your questions. Good question, no good answer.
Is there John's comment?
Yeah, please.
It it is a little more than just a comment, three pages of text.
Okay, so can we maybe do the gist? Um um, I think John is um
Let's see, I think it's in.
I think we should, yeah, there's no way of really um summarizing this. We will have this comment up on the town's website, along with our other public hearing, or public um comment. Um, so I think maybe rather than summarizing this for John, we should just let it speak for itself um on the public, on the website. Uh, is Susan Verdicchio's available? Perhaps it's a little easier to summarize for the viewers. Yeah, maybe you could read that, Taylor, my aged eyes are um
You mind if I just give it a quick look over and then?
Yeah, do that. We can, we can see if someone else would like to speak.
And you can talk.
Um, I just, no, I just read it really quickly, and it looks like she had a lot of the same thoughts that I had. Why are we limiting it to ten? Why are we rounding down? It looks like these, some, or rounding down is, is perhaps not a dictate from the state, but um but like me, she wants to kind of prod people, she wants to increase our affordable housing unit downtown.
Um, so the, the state, we have, and we have a um opinion from Town Council that if we were to round up rather than round down, that is possible, we would
Go over ten percent.
Go over ten percent.
Yeah.
And in order to do so, we would have to have an economic feasibility analysis.
Right.
So the feasibility analysis that we had done were for a larger number of units. And so um the difference in the units between rounding up and rounding down is it's, it's one or two units, which doesn't sound like a lot. Um, it is, means one perhaps fewer um unit for a family which could use it. This is a I mean, I, you know, the, the, the housing, John Sirbir, Housing Partnership Board Chair um was, was, uh, he's not here, I would like to ask him, he worked with the our economic feasibility um consultants on this. So um I wish if he were here, he could describe how they arrived at the models they ran. So
By the way, go ahead, sorry.
I, I just want to note that, you know, we can revisit this in the future, if we decide that we would like more affordability, and we are able to prove to the state that it is not, does not create an economic barrier, we can revisit this at any time. This is not a once and done thing, although um sometimes it appears that that's what happens, but something this important, the town can come back after um we, the key thing here is we have a deadline of December of this year. And we are trying to make sure that we are compliant, and that we get it past town meeting. Um, if we were to, if we were to move this to fall town meeting, for instance, the state has said it would take them about ninety days to review the bylaws that come in, and if we did this at November town meeting, we, if the state came back and said we are not compliant, they would probably do so in twenty twenty-five, and we had, would have passed our deadline. And um we know the state is being um very assertive in their um litigation. So what this does is it gets us there. Um, I know that it is not going to we have heard, um, a lot of people would have liked to see more affordable housing. But again, this law was not designed to create affordable housing. It was designed to create more market rate units in order to drive the price of housing down through open market. So that was very clear from the state. Okay, um I think that we've gotten um all of the people who are going to show up have shown up. And if um there are no further comments or questions, I, I would like everyone to know that you can always reach out to us at um planningboard@winchester.us. Um, we read, everyone on the board gets your email, goes to uh the town planner Taylor Herman as well. Um, we will be having um at least one more public outreach opportunity uh for town meeting members and general, general residents and residents coming up in a a few weeks prior to town meeting. Um, so this the board, uh, as we move forward this evening, the board will do a final vote to put this on the town warrant. Um, it will go through legal counsel who will vet it again. They've been working very closely with us this week to make sure that we are consistent with the state's requirements. Um, there may be small changes based on legal's reading. Um, but the, the, the underlying policies that the board has decided upon will remain in the document. Anything that would change would be only cleanup of language, and um that would go through the standard moderation, the standard system where the town moderator will evaluate such language changes to see whether they are consistent with the intent and whether, how we should proceed to town meeting to um convey those changes, whether it be by an amendment or by um acknowledgement that it's only just a square nurse cleanup. So those are the steps forward. So uh with that, I would uh welcome a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
And uh I think we have a second. Uh, so let us uh do a real call vote. Yeching?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
I say aye as well. I'd like I say aye as well. I'd like to thank everyone who joined us this evening. I, and I appreciate that you took your time away from looking at the candidate, the League of Women Voter debates and. Thank you very much and thanks to everyone out in TV land. So currently, what we're going to do now is I think that. The planning board, if you have any questions on the language, I think that. Again, the. The version that Taylor scrolled up on the screen earlier, it contains the edits that were made. Based on our discussion on Tuesday evening. I hope you had a chance to review them today. I don't think there was anything in there that is radically. The language, the, the, the part with the largest language change would be affordability part and that now. Mimics as much as possible what's in the center business district language. With the only change being rounding up or down. I believe that's the only change. There might have been a couple of tweaks to the words, but other than that, it's the same. So any.
So I actually thought as I, as we, as you were going through your presentation and I'm kind of mad at myself that I didn't circle it. I thought I saw that something that was a typo, so I will find it and send it to Taylor.
If there are scrivener's errors and there are typos, those are completely legitimate to correct before it goes to town meeting. Certainly, there is the, there's the one table which still has the old names for the overlay districts that needs to be corrected. And I, I went through that thing five times today. I can't understand how I missed that, so.
So I do have a question about that actually, because Anne Sarah asked the question whether, whether we would be able to use. Both the, the name and the MOD one, two, three, four designation.
I, my recollection of, of, of what Anne Sarah said was that we should make sure in our presentations we do so. And so I don't want to put words in Anne's mouth, but I, certainly at town meeting, I think we would use both. But within the actual zoning bylaw, I think it.
Yeah.
We, we had, Sally, you recall the, the long drug out discussion about naming we had on Tuesday.
I just hate it when things get drug out. And yes, for the very reasons that I pointed out when we were writing the document, that some of those names are already taken for legal purposes with real boundaries.
Yeah, so I, when we describe it, I think it, it is important to let people know geographically where they're located. But, but let's, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, one thing, Taylor, I didn't look. Did we get the floor area ratio definition in there?
Uh, I have it on in your email. It's not in there yet.
Okay, so that's the one late addition, which was to, there was a comment from Yicheng to add floor area and floor area ratio. We have a definition of floor area in our, already in section ten. We're just gonna, that's the one we discussed on Tuesday, so we'll just keep that one. The definition of floor area, we, it's, it's essentially going to be the. Or area ratio will be floor area divided by lot size. Which seems to be. The, the common definition.
I, I zoned out a tiny bit, but I think, so you're asking what we want to discuss now, if, if any changes. I had a question about the historically significant structures map and just curious. How that came about. I understand CBD one was already made. But the one on Main Street, is it just pre nineteen forties buildings, Taylor?
This is. Based off of historicals inventory of. Yeah, based, based off of historicals inventory.
Okay.
We worked between Su- Susan. Or Ellen Knight in Archives.
Oh, yeah.
And, and. Yeah, we worked with Archives to, to, to get the, to get the data.
Okay, cool. Just curious. And then I, I talked to Taylor about this and it's a little bit too complicated to get in, but just wanted to make this point before I leave the board. But that, you know, in the mods, one, two, three, four here. Mod two and mod four are taking what's existing and then putting it in our zoning, right? So we're basically locking in to those two mods not capable of doing anything other than what it's built. So that we, we've locked them in into not being able to build anything. Mod one and mod three are sort of, are two hopefuls in, in the end, in that. Even though a lot of the underlying zoning hasn't changed except for parking. And I think that's, that's it, right? Parking and maybe some height changes on mod three, is that right? Am I summarizing that right?
It's just the parking.
It's just the parking.
I want to push back a little on your statement, Yicheng. The underlying zoning still prevails on mod two and four if they wish to take advantage of it.
Okay, but mod four, you can only right now build because with a seventy foot setback, you can only build what is existing right now. And so I would, I would propose that. If we had more time and because this is so hard to understand for a lot of people and take too long to explain to town meeting. What we would want to see without, without that building as it exists and it's now close to about sixty some years old. It will probably need a lot of maintenance. You know, they might need to sell parts of their land. I mean, we're looking at one. Uh, ninety percent open space requirement here. So you're saying ninety percent, like that's impossible to build anything on. Except for a long, skidding tall building.
I don't think we're. I'm sorry.
No, I, that's what, that's what was existing, Taylor, right? It's ninety. Um, so you're not allowed to build anything except for tall skinny buildings. I. I would, if we had more time, imagine, you know, at one point oh. Um, FAR, like that is really low density. And a way more pleasant way of development would be something completely different. And so. My point is, this is, it's a very old building now. They will be needing money to, to upkeep a lot of things and the possibility of selling parts of the land. In order to, to, you know, fund some of that, it will, will come up. And so in, in zoning for Main Street. You know, in the coming up year, I would ask that you look at mod four and, and. Figure out the optimal way. I think, you know, a seventy foot setback is, is not, is not good on Swat. You would want to push it up and lower density, that kind of a, a, other option or, or rezoning of that area. If we want development there is, is necessary and it's going to be complicated, but, but I think that, you know, Michael Way would be able to help us with that. Kind of imagining. And it's, it's a little bit of a missed opportunity here. I mean, I think it, it was too complicated for us to figure out probably right now. But we've locked those two things in.
So again, I, I, I don't think we have locked those things in. Those underlying buildings were built under a special permit. So if the uses of those special permit no longer fit. Then the exist, then the underlying zoning below those special permits is what come to the fore.
So RA one twenty, right, is what mod four is?
But RA one twenty, I don't know, provides the scale of the building. I believe that was a special permit to build that building. As were the special permits on mod two. So the overlay district doesn't lock anything in, except if you wish to use the overlay district. So there's an argument that you could make that, you know, if the. If Parkview wants to develop more of their land, let's say if they want to put in more housing. And they want to do it using the special permit zoning, then they could come back to the town and ask for a. Relief from some parts of that special permit, or they could come back to the town and ask for a different zoning on that lot. But I don't, so the, the overlays don't prevent, don't make it any more difficult than it already.
Right. It did not make it easier.
Is that something that we can? Do, I mean, can we do this when we come up with the zoning? For North Main that we, that we've deferred? Can we incorporate Ching's, you know. Sense on, on MOD four as part of that zoning?
I, I think that MOD four is, the Parkview lot is such a huge lot and it's eight acres. That I think we have to be, and it's, it's, it's very deep in a but, so. I mean, personally, I think that it's, it's worth talking about separately because it is so different. It's just.
So it's something that maybe the condo association might bring to the town and say, hey, look, we're thinking about this. But can we work together on how do we develop this in some way?
I think that would be the best case scenario is that they would approach the town and say, how do we do this?
Yeah.
Because, you know. For mod two, I think it's a little different because one of those lots is Winchester Housing Authority. And they might have their own ideas. And again, I think that. They're just big lots and I, you know, I, I don't know. Yeah.
I have a comment to, to follow up on this, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I actually think that Yicheng has brought up a really interesting point. And she also brought up a really interesting scenario. Her point was that if we make the overlay district dimensional table. Match what is currently built there. That anything else that would be built on that land under this overlay. Would also be up to that height. And, um, and, and dimensionally, whatever else it would be. And so. Say it does happen that the condominium association realizes they have major needs for funds and they. Sell off of a, a, a meaningful piece of land that a developer is very interested in coming in and developing. So he could put something as tall as the Parkview.
No, because the setbacks would forbid that. It's seventy foot setback from.
So in fact, there's, there's no way that, that land can even be sold and developed.
It can be, it's just, it won't be through the mod.
It would be through the RA one twenty zoning.
Or just a, like a special permit, like the I said, they, they would come to town and say, how do we do this?
Okay.
So, yeah, one of the questions that I asked of town council, and I didn't pursue it unfortunately. Was, what, what is the relative priority of a special permit over the underlay zoning? And how does that special, does that special permit fundamentally change the underlying zoning? Or is it simply, you know, if, if you wish to do, how, how does a special permit relate to the underlying zoning in terms of further use? And I think that's a question that town council would have to ask, I mean, answer before we could consider how we. Tweet, I mean, if, if mods two and four were built with just under the underlying zoning, then I think it's pretty clear how we would handle it. Well, I think it's clearer.
I think that even without council, I would be so bold as to dare to make an opinion about that. Which is if you are, so if you're asking what is the, what is the impact of a special permit condition? On the underlying zoning. The impact is that it's integral to the zoning. It is a thing you can do in this zone that if you do this, we will consider doing this. And it's a discretionary decision on the part of the board. Whether we will award you that special permit because you did something, okay? Otherwise, there's, or you have a condition, like say it's, like you, with variances, those kinds of conditions. But. So to me, it's very obvious that the special permit is a part of the underlying zoning, the special permit process. And the terms that would require you to apply for one. According to the underlying zoning, it is all one body of information. It's considerable. So, so therefore, if somebody wants to come in, say that, that the Parkview sells a piece of land. And someone wants to come in and build there. Right now, the underlying zoning is residential RA one twenty. And the overlay zoning is residential. Um, multifamily. So between those two, they would be able to do something that was what they wanted. That was within the bounds of what's permitted on that lot. I just, I'm a little concerned as Yicheng said about the seventy five foot setback.
So I think that's the problem though, is that there's a special permit. We don't know what it was. This is too long ago. But there were certain conditions put upon development on that land by the special permit. And if selling a chunk of that land violates the conditions of the special permit, then they can't do it.
So therefore, to protect ourselves, we've said, let us just create the MOD zoning. To reflect what is currently built by special per- permit.
We, we've created the MOD zoning, I think in good, in large part for Parkview and mod two. Is that we use the existing densities in our compliance model. And so.
Yes.
And so if we were to, for instance, wish to increase the amount of density on Parkview. Then we would have to revisit the compliance model and determine, so this is. This is a whole level of complexity that we decided not to go into because. You open up, you know, when you start looking at all the development possibilities on those lots, then you have to really start. Creating new zoning from scratch.
And it is interesting now because does it mean that is, that the planning board, future planning board will. If they do change anything in the underlying zoning of an MOD. Does that, that doesn't need to go through the state, does it?
Nope.
Okay, it's only if we want to change the MOD zoning. Terms after it gets, we get it to them by December thirty first, it's approved, it's active, it's enacted, it's everything is real. And then we come up with a situation where we want to loosen it or, or make it stricter. Change it for some purpose, that has to go back.
The, yes, the state will have to review any changes we make to the MOD to ensure that it is compliant.
Right.
But since it's only the overlay district, which is ruled by the MOD. We can do anything we want to the underlying zoning, which is what we plan on doing to North Main Street. Want to make sure that they are consistent so that we don't have this real shock when you have. Projects developed under the MOD versus the underlying zoning. We want to make sure there's harmonious. Development, but yes, it's, it's totally separate.
Um, are we going? We're, go ahead, Nick.
No, I, 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 I just had, why don't you go ahead? I had a question about the map that. Taylor sent us and.
Oh, I just wanted to know when we were going to talk about inclusion, zoning, or are we done with that?
It's whatever you people want to talk about.
Uh, well, I think we should talk about that for sure. So I am a little confused because there is a. There's a feasibility study supposedly done a while ago that maybe John is referring to, but I thought we were doing. A current feasibility study that was about the MBTA three A. And that was recently done. And you, I'm, I'm a little confused on why we wouldn't be able to. Present that feasibility study now with the rounding up and what our existing inclusionary laws are. And, and apply that here.
So I don't know that the existing. I don't recall the exact details of the models. I believe the models were using the round down. And I don't know whether they.
Can we speak that feasibility study? Is that, is that?
It was, it was sent out, it was sent out to the board.
It was, darn it.
Yeah.
I'll help you find it, Lisa.
Yeah, so, so the feasibility study was looking at. So the, the question is, can you, if we, if we were to round up instead of round down. Then we would have to ensure anything above six units to ten units would actually require. A affordable unit. And so the question is, is it affordable? Can you add a, you know, what is the economic impact of adding an affordable unit to a six, seven, eight, nine or ten unit? Development. Okay, so that's where the affordability kicks in. So all of a sudden, the state is saying, you only have to put in a unit starting at ten units. And then the town is saying, no, you actually have to start doing that at almost half of that unit. So that is, that was not. Studied, I do not believe. Studied, I do not believe that that was, we did a study of that. So that's a significantly different question than rounding. So if we're gonna round up, then we have to deal with adding a affordable unit to any development between six. Or above six, and that is, that's a, a question I do not believe the afford, the, the study looked at. The study looked at what would happen if we added five percent. At one twenty percent AMI, and it actually looked at what would do if we did five percent at one, at eighty percent AMI. Um, but I, those are the two that call, that I am, that I recall. If the board wants, I mean, so if we want to do a study to see whether or not. It's affordable at six through ten. Then um. Um, can we pop up the economic um?
Do you think it might be possible, since there are some questions and maybe ambiguities, and maybe the state is even trying to figure it out? That within this article, we do the round, we, we do what is existing inclusionary, submit it. And because there is a severability clause that says, oh, wait, that if that does the pass muster, then, then we, we do it again, or we submit our. Um, feasibility study by then. I think that would, that would ease some concerns that we're hearing about this.
So. Um, uh, you know, I.
I mean, it, it doesn't, it, I, I thought that we kind of put this together. Because it would be the path of least resistance to town meeting in terms of. Conforming with what we had done in the past, uh, what's already in the center business district, um, not going above ten percent and, and, and. You know, that. Uh, and, and, and that, what my, my sense, I, and what I thought is that what we had is the, is the um. I- i- is, is gonna have the most likely to, to, to pass town meeting.
Well, it's an intersection of what we believe that is um, most acceptable to town meeting and what is. Acceptable to the Commonwealth for the rules of this law. Um, and what I am gratified to have learned is that the rounding down versus rounding up. Is at the discretion of the town, right, Diab?
Only if it doesn't va- if it does not increase the number. So the state says that you cannot have more than ten percent except through an economic feasibility analysis.
I see.
And so the state, you can, you know, so the state says round, you know, so. How do you define ten percent of six units? If the state rounds down, then ten percent of six units is zero. If town wishes to round up, then ten percent of six units is one unit. And then we have to prove to the state that that one unit is economically feasible. So. You know, we can, we can put it one way or the other, as long as we have a economic feasibility argument which the state will accept. I think that, you know, so Taylor, would you scroll down a bit so we can see what the scenarios were? Um, so these are the scenarios that were, so we have a twenty-five unit garden style. condo, which is more than six units. Let's see if we have something which talks about something less than ten units here. Okay, that's twenty-five units. Under twenty units. Under twenty units. Twenty-five units. One twenty units, one twenty units. So. The, the rest of this is all the background on how they determine the uh return on investment or whatever they use to do it. So we do not have an economic feasibility analysis, which. Works for the scenario where we round up. And so. If the board wishes to consider rounding up. Then we need to procure such an analysis because I think the state will be. Um, would look a scant at that, or skew, or whatever the word is.
Well, right, and, and so the statement that I made that it's up to the town's discretion. May be true, but the, the state. Is very strict about the intent of the law. And what you're saying is if we were to propose a rounding up model. That they might combine that with something else that they found borderline acceptable and say, therefore, the. The project is not acceptable, the proposed by law language is not acceptable.
Well, I, I think they would look at that and say, you've now, you've, you've, you've. You know, if the state is saying, we define it by, you know, our definition is rounding down. And the town, and then the, you know, it, it's up to the town to decide whether they round down or round up, but they have to prove to the state that according to the state's rules. That um. It's affordable, so again.
Doing this feasibility study, how much time and cost will that be to the town, you think?
I don't know. Um, this, this, this um, study was done under, there was a. Essentially, the state gave money to the um consultants to do the study for us.
Well, I think that this is important to the town enough. Um, we're talking eighty percent AMI, which is, you know, one person making eighty thousand dollars. We're not talking really deep affordability here. Um. I mean, it's, it's important to the town to increase this. Number or, uh, uh, and I think, you know, if we can, within the time allowed, I, I would, I would. Advocate for shooting up and then um, including it here so that if we have. If we have trouble with that, there's a severability clause so that we can adjust this in the, in a manner. That, you know, conforms later, if, if that's the case, but. I would a- I would aim for shooting up.
So I think, I think that um, th- the question behind all of this is, what do we do? If a particular topic comes up at town meeting and proves to be an obstacle. Um. I know that for some things, we can have an amendment on the floor. Um, and as long as that doesn't change the compliance model. Then it can possibly be integrated into what takes the final vote. But if we make anything on the floor that changes the compliance model, um. It needs to come back for a vote, right, Diab? And that would either be a special election or it would be in November.
Special town meeting, yeah.
Special town meeting, that's what I meant to say. And that's a costly exercise to the town. So therefore, to each thing's point about whether we should. Put in what we want now and in immediately initiate the process of getting a feasibility model. Feasibility analysis run for what we're proposing and we, I, we need in this meeting right now to put a point on what it is that we would be changing. Um, and if we do that, and we decide to put it in the zoning bylaw that we present it to, to town meeting. Um, it would be because we've got a feasibility model to go along with it. Uh, analysis to go along with it.
So your point Sally is that this will not change the compliance model, so it is, it.
Well, that's what I don't know, because.
No, I, it doesn't seem like it would. It doesn't change the numbers of the, of the. You know, dimensional requirements and, and such.
Well, the only compliance model.
It, it would not change the compliance model.
It, it wouldn't?
No, because it would just, you know, the state would come in and say, you can't do six, you have to do ten. Because you haven't provided us, so. So we, the, the pragmatically, if the board wishes to go forward and round up. We have to find a consultant within the next X days in order to do that analysis.
It can't be the same ones here?
So I, I.
We don't know if they're available.
Who was the, who was the consultant on this project?
They were assigned to us by the state.
And, and do we know their name?
Yes, we do. But, yeah, so, so. Carrie, please go ahead.
I, I think we leave it at ten percent in rounding down because it complies with the three A requirements. We've already got it written and we still have North Main where we can be. More granular with our, with our incentives and our exchanges, and we can sort of have our hands on the project in a different way. And I, I do think that. There's a place and there's a market for. Units and there's a need for units that are. In the, you know, not a three thousand square foot single family home and not eighty percent AMI. And I think this is our chance to sort of fill that. You know, people who are, you know, single but above this, you know, or, you know. Smaller households and that's exactly who we're trying to recruit. So I think allow, inviting developers to come in and sort of. Incentivize development because the profit margins will be a bit higher. I think we will get them built and then I think um. We have a lot of room in other projects in town and in North Main to push higher. Higher number of um, higher percentages of. Affordable housing um, as we go forward. Really tired tonight, so if that was gibberish, I'm sorry, but I kind of think we leave it as written.
So. I just want to butt in again too much. I would. I have no problem saying that we come to, we, we get a, we get a feasibility analysis and we come to town meeting in the fall. And we say that we have done the analysis and we have shown that we can do this. I would much rather get something to the state now that works without having to go through a rejection by the state. Because that will create a lot of. Unnecessary concern amongst the residents of Winchester. And I would just rather have the state sign off on it and then we come back and we do the analysis and we say, here's what we can do. We can take another crack at it in the fall and the benefit of that is that we don't have to worry if it, if it makes it through, great. If it doesn't make it through, we haven't jeopardized. Our standing with the state. I, I know that there's a severability clause in there. But I'd much rather not have the state bang us on the knuckles and I'd much rather we just go forward and, and push it while we have plenty more time. But, but, um, don't shut up.
I guess, I can, I can see that, um, that we would um, present to town meeting. As it is here in terms of the affordability. I haven't read John's letter either, so it's really difficult for me to um. Know if he's making some points in here that I would want to weigh one way or another, so that's a problem.
I can see that as a clean solution, right? Like we just go with. Um, what we can prove as a feasibility with. Five percent more at eighty instead of one twenty, you're saying. Right, Diab? At, when you twenty-five units or more, you get five percent. At eighty per, eighty, eighty percent AMI.
The, the um, the feasibility study does seem to indicate that we can do. And Taylor, if you pre- my, my brain is of course failing. If you could put that feasibility study up again, I believe that fifteen percent. At eighty percent for a twenty-five unit development is still affordable.
Okay.
So the board could. Okay, so that's one twenty. Okay, let's go to.
Let's just take a moment to look at one of these pages so we understand where to focus on.
We, okay, so this is, here we go. This is a twenty-five unit garden style.
Internal rate of return.
Eighty percent AMI, uh, fifteen percent affordable, economically feasible. This is a rental housing scenario.
Okay, so there, right there is your answer that we can, we can have fifteen percent.
So let's look at the other.
Oh, so fifteen percent at eighty, so the additional five isn't at one twenty, it's, it's all eighty. So I mean, that, that's a slight win.
Yeah, can we, can we take a look at condos? This is the other one for condos.
So if you have fif- oh, this is at one twenty.
Yeah, scroll up again, please. I think we have the.
Okay, so if we build condos, fifteen percent are available to people who are, do not make more than eighty percent. Of the AMI.
So we have, we have, we have two studies. We have one at eight, all eight eighty and one at all at one twenty. So if the board wanted to go fifteen percent at eighty percent, that would be economically feasible.
Okay. I mean, that would, that would bring so much more affordability at that five.
It would, and Taylor, um, where would this show up in the language?
It would show our.
Ability section.
In affordability section.
I'm trying to understand. You could. I'm sorry. Um, so it would be eight eleven sevens.
Could you put up the document again, please, Taylor? No, that's the wrong one. We need the.
At eight eleven seven and it.
Oh wait, this is ours? I'm sorry, it's so changed so much that I've forgotten what it looked like. Yeah, so it is eight eleven seven section.
And then it's three, it's three B.
It would be three B.
And what we're talk- I'm just trying to be really specific here about this, so Taylor doesn't have to try to decipher our decision. Um, that. Okay, ten percent of dwelling units constructed within a project that have twenty-five or more dwelling units shall be affordable according to seven sixty C M R fifty-six. And five percent constructed that have twenty-five or more shall be affordable at one, eighty to one twenty.
So we would just strike that one twenty and just say eighty?
No, you, you could make it simpler. You would simply say fifteen percent of dwelling units constructed within a project that have twenty-five or more dwelling units. Shall be affordable according to seven sixty C M R fifty-six and leave it there. That would be it.
That would do it.
Well, if we have evidence to show that that, that's possible, I think we should do it.
So do I.
Wait, what, what are we striking?
What we're saying, what, what we're saying, Nick, is that um. If a developer wants to come in and make a twenty-five unit building. And we are asking him to make fifteen percent of them. Affordable to people who only make eighty percent of the local living level.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, one twenty makes it more broadly available to people. I mean, it brings in the, the, the working. Or whatever that's called.
So that's, you know, that, the, the, one of the reasons for the CBD split between eighty and one twenty. Is the recognition that we don't have that middle income housing available.
I see.
So, so this is a policy decision by the board. Um, how does it? How does it, does it want to address that, that workforce housing?
Does the law that gets us to safe harbor care if it's eighty or one twenty?
Yes. For safe harbor, it has to be eighty percent.
It has to be eighty. So the final, the final um, five percent in any of these projects. Doesn't count towards S H I is what you're saying.
No, if it were all, if all fifteen percent were at eighty percent AMI, then all fifteen percent would count.
And you're saying that if it's ten percent at eighty and five percent at one.
Wait, I'm sorry, it would only count if they were condos. Shoot, this is a, this is an issue. So if they're condos, it would count. No, I think it would also count. They would all count as, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, they were all count, it's just that when.
Count, yeah.
And so Nick raises an interesting point, which is that we want to broaden the marketability. Um, and you know, there is a, there is a population of, of unmarried, single. No kids professionals looking for a nice place to live. And I mean, Carrie made that point earlier in the meeting about smaller units and, and younger people with making good jobs.
Not just younger people, comfortable seniors, recently divorced.
Right, seniors as well, that want to retire, that want to downsize.
Who want what they're used to in quality but without the upkeep. I think there's a huge.
Uncomfortable seniors, is it?
Well, not everyone will be able to.
I agree that, that there, I agree, and we should continue to push to expand that housing parcel, but I'm saying because it's going to create an extra barrier to passing three A's. That opportunity to fill in some of that, because there is a market for that here.
So you, that would be a case for keeping it, if we do, if, if the developer does want to do five percent. Up to one twenty, we wouldn't be opposed to it, but we wouldn't require it.
Yeah, I'm, my statement only carries, I don't believe hundred twenty percent of AMI is comfortable.
Oh, I see.
That's all I'm saying is that a hundred twenty-five percent of AMI, the reason why we have to. Make these deed it affordable is it's not a comfortable price range for people, so.
Meaning that, meaning that.
I mean, that's, you know, sure.
It, it means that the state's definition of, oh, it's just area median, it doesn't even.
It's area median income, which is, which is, which is shockingly low compared to the price of housing. So. That's why we actually are, you know, we have this concept that we have to provide. Um, support for people making up to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI.
So we're making, we have two things on the table. One is the up-down and one is the, the five, the final five percent would be to eighty or to one twenty.
Right, so the up-down, in, in my opinion, is something that. Right, so the up-down, in in my opinion, is something that if the board wishes to pursue up versus down. That it should um. Stick with the down and pursue amending this in the fall. After we have a economic feasibility analysis. Um, and I would be very wary of doing anything in the next five weeks.
Right, exactly.
So the alternative, which is, I think, what attracted people was the thought that we do have an economic feasibility analysis would allow us to. Take all fifteen percent at eighty percent AMI. Um, but so that would give us more affordable units and would make up for the round down. But there is a second policy issue, which is um workforce housing versus um. Housing for people with lower incomes.
Right, workforce housing is by definition eighty to one twenty.
Right, so so the, and I I think that at this point. Um, the. The Housing Partnership Board has has some views on um the importance of. Both. And I I know that I don't know, John isn't here to speak to this unfortunately.
Well, and I also feel badly that.
Part, he was certainly um. Part of the process which led to the CBD inclusionary zoning, which we extended to G B D two and three unchanged. Um, because the idea of workforce. Price units was an important policy decision, so.
I can appreciate that, but you know, like the, we had a housing production plan meeting yesterday and the the. Numbers, you know, within our peer communities were still the lowest. Um, official numbers are at three and we're, you know, at four percent right now. So we're we're. Shockingly. Low, right, for S H I numbers. So I I don't think that this is probably the the best way to do it. The seem seemingly the big. The big projects are the ones to get it through to to increase our numbers, but um. Just just to say that, you know, in the future, I think the priority of. Getting inclusionary housing throughout. Town beyond G B D two, G B three or or and. And figuring out how to increase that number should be a priority for planning board.
I agree. I think there's a, there's a definition of what inclusionary housing means. Does it mean eighty percent AMI? Does it mean eighty percent AMI and some workforce housing? I think that's that's.
Well, I am in favor of leaving the the word round down, which is in a previous section. It's not in three A, B, or C. It's in, I I can look, but I'm I'm.
Right there, it's in three C.
Oh, it's in three C? Sorry, sorry, sorry. So, okay, then so I'm in favor of leaving this at down. Um, and I'm in favor of. Of changing paragraph B. To say if it's twenty-five or more units in the building, fifteen percent. Shall be. Affordable. At eighty percent, well, shall be affordable according to seven sixty C M R fifty-six.
Okay, so that's, is that a motion?
Um, yes, that's a motion.
Can can I?
Well, yes, please do, Taylor. I I I don't want to not have your input.
Are you put the motion in?
I know. Well, so that we can have it, oh, we we can't talk till somebody either seconds it or doesn't second.
We could, we could get a second or a non-second, so.
Should it be? A separate. Two separate motions.
Oh, I see. You you mean one, one to keep the the rounding down?
Could you, could you withdraw your motion, please, Sally?
I will withdraw my motion. And I.
Can I speak up before? So when it comes to this consultant, we could. Have them do a little bit of, a little bit more work. Now. We still have a little bit of money left for them. Does that mean that we can have them run a ton of models? Probably not. But. It should, it should be noted that this was delivered to us as a. Close to finalized draft, but we can get back to them and say. You know, we we would, we would like these these changes. So I just have to be transparent there and let you all know. What the situation is. I do not think that we have the ability to run. Everything that we that we're looking for. Under our existing contract, but we could probably ask for little things in the next five weeks.
And this is a three A specific consultant. This cannot be applied to North Maine.
That's correct.
Uh, yeah. Although a North Maine, doing this for North Maine would probably be worth it too, but that's another.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
I find it so unfortunate that they they didn't model it exactly as how our inclusion zoning was written. It's confusing in some ways, but I I says it's the six to ten, the six to twenty-four. Issue. As well as rounding up and down.
Yeah, so. If, so, so it's all, you know, so. If the board. So the question, there there are two, so if we have money, we don't know, so the board would probably request. A um, an analysis, I don't know exactly what it would be. It would be rounding down or rounding up between zero, running up everywhere. And determining whether, so if we round up everywhere, so it's between six and ten, you get an extra unit. Between fifteen and twenty, you get an extra unit. And then. Between twenty and twenty-five, you're going to go up to fifteen, so I don't know how many extra units you'd get there as well. So um.
And because it's, the models so far indicate feasibility, it encourages us to go and get a very specific. Additional model or two at the most run, right? With the little money we have left and then we would be able to explain to town meeting that this is actually doable and it actually advances us. In our.
I think that. Again, I want to be, I'm I'm. I just want to get this through and I want the state to okay it. And I think, and I want us to take up this question when we have a little more breathing room.
Oh, I see. So that's your case for just leaving it the way it is for now.
I think we should, we should find out, we should, we should. We need to get the, we have money left for the consultants. So we should draw up some scenarios and ask the consultants how many of those they can run.
Okay.
So we can make use of the state's monies and determine that. And that will allow us. To to know whether when we go, if we go to the fall and ask whether we can round down, like if we round up and it's economically feasible, then we can go into the fall and say that. So we can still make use of the monies the state is allocated for this.
Which is good. And it and it also says that we can fine tune some things.
We can fine tune anything we want as long as it's compliant. We can, you know, that's the key thing is this is, we can fine tune anything as long as it's compliant.
But whatever we present to the state after the April vote is what they will make their compliance decision on.
Right, and if.
And any changes that we decide to make after that will require them to make a new compliance decision, but it wouldn't rescind. The one we first get.
That's correct, because at that point, we would have time to go to the state prior to submitting it to town meeting and say, hey. These are the changes we want to make. Is that okay? And they would be able to say some.
We'll all, we'll we'll also be sending in our, like. Monday. Well, I need to do a little bit more work, but we'll we'll be sending in our. Ev- everything that we've, that we've submitted into. The state and they'll give us an idea. They're not going to go through the whole process, but they'll kind of skim it over now. I don't know if they have time to review it. But the option is 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 there, they're giving people the option. Will they be able to review ours in five weeks? I kind of doubt that. But um. Uh, because I know a lot of other communities are also in the exact same situation we are. What was it?
North Andover has town meeting the same night.
Yeah.
So. Um, why don't we, why don't we come to a decision on the round up, round down? And regardless of how the board votes on changing three C, oops, it went away. Could you put that back up? So regardless of how the board votes on three C. Um, I think there's a consensus of this board um that we would pursue. Um, let's say that we're going to have to pursue an economic feasibility analysis, regardless of which way you vote. It's just a question of how soon it needs to be done. So we should um. I can, you know, we can work. It's going to have to start next week. I don't think it'll be able to be do it tomorrow.
Right, so I'm thinking about the conversation at town meeting and um, to the extent that the conversation comes up, that we wish you would have. Rounded up and we wish you would have done fifteen at eighty. We can say, we put it in like this because we want to be conservative and pass. And we have the option to write an amendment and ask the town, the state to evaluate it and bring it to you for town meeting.
Right, so regardless of how we vote on three C, we will proceed with an economic feasibility analysis.
That, and and this analysis will follow our written inclusionary ho- housing. Numbers as is, okay.
It will, it will.
Right. With 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 a a purpose to amend it. Come fall town meeting.
Yes.
Pass, great.
Well, it would be regardless of, but the, it would just, again, regardless of how we vote on three C, we're going to be doing the economic feasibility analysis. If we decide not to change three C, then then that essentially makes the decision for the board that it will go forward in the fall.
Okay.
The impact on a developer of three C is if you want to build six units, right? Um, so it's basically two side by side, three, you know, three story, whatever. Um. If C is down, you make more money. If C is up, you lose some money. And what we saw in the model and the letter was that it's still economically feasible.
Not at six. We don't have numbers for six.
Okay, so that's what Eching was asking for then, is that if we're going to do this modeling, should we do it at?
Six, it's just, it's just, it should do what our inclusion zoning says.
Six and up and rounding up.
So based on our council's notes from today, response to C today. Um, which advised. Which said that rounding down seems to be the advice. Um, I would, I would make a motion to keep C as is.
And I would second that.
Okay, and I would add to that motion that the board will. Undertake the economic feasibility analysis for the Center Business District. Inclusionary housing. And if it is feasible, it gets presented to town meeting as amendments to this bylaw in the fall.
I'll second that.
Please make that part of the motion.
I'll make that motion as well.
I think it should be conditional. I think that's what I'm trying to say, is that I think it it underscores the resolve of this board to pursue this. By making the entire motion include. That, so.
Okay, I would agree with that, and so I make that motion.
Okay, so um thankfully, we are being recorded because I told Nancy that it was to be a simple set of meeting minutes. It would be a single vote.
I'm going to um try to restate it, Diab, for the benefit of Nancy and Steve and George and Win Cam.
So the the board is is voting to. To um undertake. An economic. Feasibility analysis. Of the existing. Inclusionary housing. Requirements. In the CBD. To see. If they. Are. Compliant.
Economically feasible.
Are economically feasible. As part, as as.
To be written into our.
To be applied to the M O D.
Right, to the M O D, right.
And if so. To present. An article. At Fall Town Meeting. Twenty twenty-four. To amend. Section eight. To include them.
Eight, it's section eight eleven.
Oh, that's right, eight eleven.
Eight eleven seven. Eight eleven seven affordability requirements.
Eight eleven. Seven. Three dot B.
Yeah, eight eleven, seven, three, B and C.
B and C. Okay.
The rounding up is part of the current.
Okay, so that that is the motion.
Well, I I move that, but I think Eching, oh, Eching, you said you wanted to make that as a separate motion.
That's one motion, that's.
That's one motion.
Okay, so so is that the motion you want to make, Eching?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yeah, this is a promise by the planning board to do work this summer. To to see about a fall amendment.
Yes. Well. So so what the, what's important here is that um. We need to have the three members of the planning board who will be continuing after this election. Agree to this, otherwise it has no meaning.
Right.
Because if 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 we don't get those three members to vote for this. Then it's a minority of those who are continuing, which means that it may not go forward. So.
I I worry a little, this is to have the. Feasibility study done for the underlying zoning. I worry about people not voting for this because they think it's going to change in the fall. And either postpone, like I worry about town meeting coming down to like, well, this is partial because they're deciding this over the summer.
Which is to say therefore that you would leave B and C the way they are?
I would leave B and C the way they are, yes. Because I think, I think we've written this. I think it, I think it's reasonable. I think it will pass. And I think if, I mean. We've all been at town meeting, like I think if it's sort of like. We're going to vote for this and then it's going to be a bait and switch and then we all have a new thing in the fall. Let's just wait to see what they present in the fall. I think that's, I that's, I don't know that I wouldn't agree with, you know, I mean, it's sort of like that would be a nice cautious way forward, like.
And the case for leaving B and C as it is, the case for leaving it as it is, is that our attorney has said it's the right thing to do. And it matches what's in the sample zoning from the state. Is that right, Diab?
No, the attorney has said that. Without a, without a, without an economic feasibility analysis. That we cannot prove to the state that this is a um, this passes the the muster, so.
We do have an economic feasibility.
Not, not for six units.
And in the fall, we would then have, again, three A against North Maine, which is what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to have everyone.
I'm not saying change it to six. I'm saying keep it at ten, which is what it is now.
So the question.
I I I just, I just emailed you all. You don't need to look at it now. This, our same consultant. Did an economic feasibility analysis in Lexington in six was not economically feasible. They had to move it to eight. So. As you make your decision, just know that, that a neighboring community. Is not economically feasible at six. That doesn't mean that it won't be. But it's important to know.
So, Diab, is there anything about B that we are going out on a limb about already because we don't have?
There's, no, we have an economic feasibility analysis which covers B.
Okay.
Will not cover changing C to. Rounding up.
So to Carrie's point then, um. In concerns about people voting down the entire article. Because they don't trust what changes will occur over the fall, then we would put this exactly in front of them and. We would understand what the concerns of the town are. Before we propose anything further.
So so the that, I mean, the motion that is on the floor would not change. Section three. What it would do is it would commit the board to doing an economic feasibility analysis. To see whether section C could be changed to round down. So the motion on the floor does not change what goes before spring town meeting. It is speaking to a commitment from this board to pursue a possible amendment. At Fall Town Meeting, which I don't even know if that's legal, but um, that's.
Well, it's what you're doing. And I don't even think you need a motion. I think you're just saying that this is, we want to put this in our work plan. Let it be reflected as such in our minutes.
So. I want to address, I mean, the reason for this motion is to address the concern of a board member who wished us to see more affordability.
Well, not just me, but the three, three. People that's that um had representation where we're at the public meeting or or wrote to the public to to us. Were about this very point.
Yes.
Three out of three.
So I I I'm just, yes, so, so, but. is there a, so this prevents a middle way forward.
It prevents a what?
It presents.
Oh, presents, thank you.
And remind me what our capacity will be if a project comes before us, what will be our capacity to waive development requirements if they do increase the affordable units even though it's not required by three A, we will still have some leeway there?
We we took that out.
We would, there's a, there's a um submission requirements that we can, there is a wave somewhere in this document, um. There's a statement about waivers right there. Site plan review may waive one or more requirements, so this is the site plan review authority.
Oh, requirements of the section eight eleven six general development standards.
Right, so it doesn't provide any dimensional release. But it may, it may, for instance, if you need to move your pedestrian access or you need to move an access somewhere to make it more feasible, then we could do that. But it doesn't really, there are no incentives.
Yeah, I had drafted a incentive paragraph that's not in.
We voted to take that out on Tuesday.
It was, it was a, it's a long way to do it, so we will have, we will be locked into this and we will have no way of of negotiating with developers if they want to do, if they.
If if they want to do what, Carrie?
If they i- i- if they sort of need, you know, changes or sort of they want, there's no way for us to flex. We can stick to dimensional requirements and we can stick to this level of affordability, but we would have no leverage to say, if you did fifteen, we could help you this way. Or if you do an extra unit, we could help, there's nothing we'll be able to offer in exchange.
Here, if we change, if we, if if we uh, if we go back to eight, whatever it was that we were at before, eight seven, eight eleven seven three.
We have nothing in here which provides specific incentives or specific relief for that. We would have to provide specific language to do so.
And eight eleven seven three B says um, that they shall have ten percent and five percent, so if you build a building with twenty five units, you have to have fifteen percent of them.
Right, but I mean, Carrie's going for, if they come in and they say want, they want to put twenty percent affordable, can we, can we make something easier for them elsewhere? And this language does not allow that, we don't have that flexibility.
Right, and that was what I tried to figure out how to write, but we didn't.
We don't, we don't, and if we were, we I mean, we're, we're, we're spending, I think someone.
Yeah, I I'm, I'm always interested in sort of fleshing it out for people who are watching at home, I'm still happy with it as written and I don't know if we should.
I'm happy with it as it is written, I I think we should vote on it and I think we have a good uh document to bring to town meeting the way it is.
So I lost track of what the motion is.
Uh, we had a motion to um.
Oh, to to make a commit.
Okay, so the motion then would be to keep C as is. And then there was an amendment to that and we could do that as a separate thing, so if somebody wants to second.
We don't need them, we we don't need a motion to keep C as.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we also don't need a motion to commit the planning board to do something in the fall. I think that we, the planning board will listen to the community dialogue and um and be grateful to have been approved by the state before the December deadline and will commit to bring substantive changes that address community concerns to the state to be approved in our existing compliant law.
Yeah, and I I I have a feeling that if legal were here, he would tell us that we can't make a motion to compel a future board.
That's why I'm saying don't.
So this is a statement, a statement of 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 our intent.
I think it is also very likely that there will be other small things that we might want to change in the fall too.
Correct.
So um in the spirit of getting us um to bed earlier, um, are we, are we uh, have we concluded, are there, is there a further discussion on affordability requirements? If not, um, so we have um eaching, you had two questions, one was about historical and I think that was answered, then we had a discussion about affordability. Uh, Nick, you had something that you were going to.
I I just had a quick question about the map that we got from the 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 map of the whole town. Uh, Taylor, wh- what are we supposed to take from that particular map that you sent us in the email? It says revised updated zoning map, is that?
Yeah, so that's also something that we're bringing to uh town meeting is a revised zoning map. And uh, I bet that ninety nine percent of the town will not even notice that it changed. So the only thing that is different is that our overlay is hashed over, hatched over to signify where our overlay is on the zoning map, there is no other changes.
Okay.
But you have to vote on that tonight.
Okay, so so we can vote on that, we can vote on the uh, on the document.
Right, and we do have one, if we could scroll to definitions, Taylor, if we could make, uh, we do have to make one amendment to the document, which is to add a definition of floor area ratio. And so if we could um, if I could have a motion to amend the document to add the definition of floor area ratio and the language would be um floor area ratio is the ratio.
An official document yet.
Pardon?
This isn't even an official document yet, we haven't even, we haven't even ended. We're still editing, I don't think.
Well, can we edit, can we vote on this?
Well, we can, we don't need to, but we can just say, yes, we all agree, we could put this in.
We just need to add the definition, right?
I mean, FAR is the ratio of the floor area of the building to the um area of the lot.
Thank you, to the lot size or the lot area.
To the lot size.
Yeah, a lot area, you're correct, it's just usually it's called lot area.
So it's floor area to lot area, that's why it's called floor area.
I thought, I thought this wasn't going to be a live document tonight, Taylor.
Well, I think it's live, if if there's anything that.
It is now.
It is now, right.
No, if there's anything we have to.
Have the technology, okay.
All right.
So um, are there any, do we have further discussion of this bylaw?
No, but I would like to see the changes made to the town.
You would like to see the changes made to?
The town map, I didn't actually look closely at it because I didn't realize it had changed, Taylor, all that work that you did and I dissed it.
Well, everyone, thank Griffin, Griffin worked overtime and uh uh, gave him some time off, so he 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 championed this.
Thank you for pulling it up.
Okay, so can you spot the difference?
It's, yes, it's huge, the mods are huge, which is great, I guess.
I'm I I um.
Um.
So go to the key.
It's going to take a while to load.
What is the key identify as this is a mod, is it a dotted line or something?
It's these, these striped hashes, these dashes.
Okay, now I see them.
Okay.
Yeah, not to be, not to be confused with the ones indicating swamp land.
Yeah.
Well, most definitely not.
Okay, I think we, I I I think this is a nice map, I think you did a good job.
Um, I'm sorry, but the hatches need to include the green space um that is across from the stop and shop.
They do.
They do, they're in there.
Okay, I'm going to zoom in.
Um, one question for you might be, so mod three and mod four look very similar.
Sally, they 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 definitely do. I know it might be hard to see on 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 your computer, I guarantee you when we print it out.
I'm talking about the little park where all the ducks sit.
I I promise you with a hundred percent of my ability, they are there.
Sorry, sorry, I don't mean to not trust you, Taylor.
What, 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 eaching?
Taylor, so so and the um inserts on the below the map, right? Where you have the square. So mod three and mod four are very similar, except that they're at different scales. I wonder if you could do mod, the third panel as mod three plus mod four. So that.
We tried that and we thought it was more confusing.
But it's, yeah.
Because, because the other two have their own.
Scale down below. I see.
Yeah.
Could you do mod three, mod four with a arrow pointing?
What does that mean?
So.
What's an arrow pointing?
Oh, so you would do mod two, three at at the top and then have a little arrow pointing to mod three and then mod four to mod four. Do you see what I?
Here's, here's, here's my opinion on our zoning map. One of the reasons it took us so long to do this is because I could probably put a hundred cell Excel spreadsheet list of something that's wrong about this. Whether it's a wrong color, whether it's uh the layers are wrong, things are marked incorrectly. We aren't going to touch any of that now because that's not really what we're bringing to town meeting, we're just bringing mod to town meeting. I think it's, it would be an excellent thing for us to say in the fall, here's our new zoning map. But they're just, just, just a new map and everything is more clear. Colors are better, they're more, these, these colors are not accessible at all. They don't look good on 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 some computer screens. Um, printed out things don't, don't, don't look good, but we where we can't really control that right now, but it is something that we can bring to to fall, what what we have here, I think, does what we needed to do for the next few months. And what we bring to to fall won't be controversial in the lightest because we won't be changing anything, we'll just be visually enhancing it.
Okay, so I I noticed that your scale is at the bottom and they're just slightly off so that people can understand that these are at different scales. So that's fine.
Yeah.
Because mod one to two.
If you can scroll up to the right, Taylor, that's.
Three to four are different, yeah.
They're all different, yeah. So.
Thank you for pu- putting the scale down there.
See Sally, right, right here.
I do, um, yes, thank you, yes, thank you.
So, so, can I, can I get a motion to approve the new zoning maps?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, Sally?
Hi.
Um, let me hold on a sec, I have to write the motion, shoot, uh, who moved that?
Sally.
No, I didn't, Nick, I think you said so.
I I seconded, uh, did.
I think it was Carrie.
I'm so moved, sorry.
I have to, I forgot, I have to write these down for Nancy, approve new maps, motion by Carrie, second. Nick, uh, roll call vote, Sally?
Hi.
Uh, Nick?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Uh, eaching?
Um, thank you, Griffin and Taylor, hi.
Hi, and Deob's is hi as well, and thanks as well. Okay, so we've now approved the maps, now we go back to the main document. Taylor, you want to finish typing the definition of floor area ratio there?
Yeah, is it in the, is it one of these in the email?
Yeah, it's just, it's just floor area divided by lot area, so you just have to type that in.
Well, we, oh yeah, but do we want to do these alphabetically?
Let's just.
I'll, I'll fix it.
Okay, good. People won't see it if they're thinking it's alphabetical.
Just put a slash, just, I would just do the formula.
Um, floor area of building.
Floor area of the building.
That the floor area is defined in our.
It is.
We just say floor area, we have a full definition of what floor is, so it's floor area.
The ratio of the floor area to the lot area.
Okay, let's do it that way, the ratio of the floor area to the lot area.
And we can capitalize floor and area and lot and area, well, we can capitalize lot. So it's capital F, capital A, and capital L.
I don't know that we have a definite, yeah, and take out the word of divided.
Oh, well, I better check and see if we have a definition of a lot.
Right, so floor area is an official definition, so we can capitalize that, or uppercase the words.
Oh, I see, that's what.
We do, we do have a definition for lot.
Okay, so we should capitalize all the words we have a definition for, I think.
I think that's right, um.
No, no, I think we just had, yeah, capitalized, okay, so that we're good, the ratio of the floor area and instead of the divide symbol, we just put the word to, to the lot area, since we've gone all English, okay.
And also lot area is a little bit of a a double. I think you can just say lot because our definition for lot is an area of land in one ownership.
But it's not a numeric, the lot area here is an actual measure.
Land, uh, okay.
So we could call it the, yes, I I would call it the lot area, it's, it's an area, so.
Okay.
Okay. Um, is this the only change that we're going to make?
I'm pretty impressed, have, and Taylor, I'm going to assume that every time that a a number changes, it changes in a sequential way.
Yeah, but I have to go back and do it manually, so a few of them are off, like timeline is off, just.
Oh, I see that now.
That they'll be, that they'll be correct.
Um, I did, I did have one comment this afternoon about eight eleven seven, the general development standards. And this is just, this is just a formatting thing, so I I don't need to take time on it, if you can change it later.
Okay.
Eight eleven seven.
Any, any sort of formatting issues or Scrivener's errors?
Not, not.
I think we can, we can, we can, we can, the motion can state that we accept that, you know, with with Scrivener's errors or formatting changes.
Right.
Okay.
Corrections to Scrivener's errors, we don't want to add any.
Okay, so I would move that the planning board accepts the language as presented for the MBTA three A um zoning article to present at Springtown Meeting um with the understanding that um any changes made to this after it's published in the warrant um would be simply for Scrivener's errors or what was the other one?
Formatting, or I I think we should make it a little flexible in case legal wants us to change language.
Okay, like, changes of language, uh Scrivener's errors and um uh.
Formatting.
Formatting, but I think changes of language is a great big open door, I I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I don't know if we should say that, I I I mean.
Well, the, so.
Be more specific.
Wording but not substance?
You know, if legal says we have to change the way we say something, but it maintains the meaning, then I think that would be okay.
Okay, so what.
So I don't know how to say that.
It to change the wording um for clarification but not change of subs, change of meaning. Does that work, Carrie?
I think that's great, I don't know.
Good.
Okay, so the motion is to accept, to, I think the motion is to submit.
The board votes to approve the language as written.
Well, yeah, yeah, actually, we have to, we're, we're moving to submit this article to the town meeting.
I see.
To town meeting, I think that's the right language, as written. You know, no, I'm not as written, um, with.
The understanding that.
The understanding that minor formatting changes and Scrivener corrections may be made. And that any substantive changes by legal.
No, any wording changes requested by legal.
Well, wording changes covers everything, if they say you can't use and or you have to use but.
Well, that does change everything, but so what are you saying about it then?
I'm just saying if there are no substance, if there are substantive changes, then it has to come back to the board. But if they.
I mean, I think it's okay if it comes back to us and we 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 take five minutes out and we vote for it.
Well, it's very likely that we will, it's just the the question of what. Well, it's very likely that we will, it's just the the question of what goes in the warrant, because that's tomorrow at noon.
I think that. Legal has a couple of weeks to work on this. If there are substantive change, if, you know, it will come back to this board. To look at, if the board wants to accept those changes, then it will or it won't.
Okay, so there's actually one more pass.
The town moderator will weigh in on it to see whether or not those changes require an amendment at town meeting. Or whether they're simple clarifications. So if we just want to say we accept this, um. With the understanding that minor formatting and Scrivener corrections may be made. Then we can do that, and then if legal wants to change something, then we have to vote on it, this this board will have to vote on it.
I think that's a, that's a better approach.
I think so too.
I, I, okay, um, so that's the motion. The motion is to submit this article to town meeting. With the understanding that minor formatting changes and Scrivener's corrections may be made. Uh, I don't know who made, was that your motion, Sally?
It may have been.
Okay, so this is Sally. Is there a second?
Second.
Carrie seconds, okay, um, I think that's the only other vote we're doing, we're only having two votes today. Um. Okay, roll call vote, eaching?
Hi.
Uh, Nick.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
Uh, Carrie.
Hi.
And I say hi as well, thank you all very much, um, I just realized we forgot to close the hearing.
Special thank you to Taylor and Griffin, this is an incredible amount of work.
Absolutely.
It looks great.
Amazing.
Thank you so much.
Hands off. If you have a very phone-off weekend.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think I'm gonna be doing much.
Good.
We won't call you on Monday.
I'm, I'm, I'm actually just not gonna work on Monday, so.
Oh, good, it would be fine.
Block us.
Okay, so can I get a uh, motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
This is nine twenty eight. Carrie moves to adjourn. Uh, Nick, you seconded it up?
Yep.
Okay, uh, eaching?
Hi.
I'm gonna assume this is gonna be unanimous, I'm not gonna reveal it down, eaching is hi, Nick.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
And I will say hi, okay, thank you all very much, appreciate all of the input we got from our zoning. Um, whatever Z R E C stands for this evening.
Zoning Review Advisory Committee.
Committee, we will, we will be welcoming your participation as we move to town meeting, to town meeting in the fall. For North Main Street, thanks to everyone who has come along on this ride, it has been a really interesting one. Um, we will not be meeting next week for the first time in I think years.
Oh my god.
We will meet again virtually on March twenty sixth. Um, which will be uh, our last meeting for Sally and eaching. Um, but um, until then, uh, I'd like to, uh. I think we, yeah, we're all, Wind Camp, thank you very much as usual, uh, Taylor Herman, town planner, thank you all very much, thanks to those who showed up this evening. Um, and thanks to everyone out there in TV land, um, have a great couple of weeks, see you later.
Bye, everybody.